Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our Lebanon City Council meeting, August 24th, 2021. Please call the roll.
Mayor Brewer.
Here.
Vice Mayor Messer.
Here.
Mrs. Monroe.
Here.
Mr. Shoep.
Here.
Mr. Matthews.
Here.
Mr. Schaefer. Mr. Kope.
Here.
And a motion to excuse Councilmember Schaefer.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, Pastor Embry, if you would come up to the microphone, he will give the invocation. Please remain standing for the pledge.
Father God, we come before you today. God, I thank you that your word says that this is the day that you have made and will rejoice and be glad in it. Father, we invite you into this room tonight. Father, I pray that all hearts and minds be clear. And Father, I pray that anything that is said, anything that is done, it be to upbuild you, to upbuild your kingdom. Father, I thank you for the leadership of this community. Thank you for every heart and mind that's represented in this room. And Father, I thank you that, as you taught us to pray, Father, that thy kingdom come and thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Father, I pray your blessing over this evening. And Father, I pray in all things that is said and done, Father, that we look to you as the source of our hope, our joy, and our strength. In the mighty name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America. And to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And I would like to welcome everyone this evening to our meeting. I do believe there may be some new faces, just to go over some of the, kind of the protocol of our meetings. I do know that there are some individuals that have filled out forms. And after we take care of a little business, I will bring you up. You will state your name and address for the record. And you have three minutes to speak. And we welcome all conversation. I do know that there are people that are probably here to talk about some of the legislation. When that time comes, you'll be able to come up. It's the same protocol. State your name, address, and three minutes to speak. Again, trying to promote a respectful communication and dialogue with everybody. And again, I welcome you. So with that, I will first have council take a look at consideration of regular meeting minutes, August 10th, 2021, and a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion or comment? Please call the roll.
Mr. Kope? Yes. Mr. Matthews?
With amendment, yes.
Mayor Brewer?
Yes.
Mrs. Monroe?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Shoep?
Yes.
And consideration of work session meeting minutes, August 16th, 2021, and a motion to adopt.
Before we move on to that, Mayor?
Yes.
Mr.? Was the amendment the?
The one amendment was, there was a carryover before that said I had adjourned the meeting, and I did not adjourn the 10th meeting.
Yes, and I did fix that hopefully on the copy there.
Yeah.
So thank you. Yep, that's a record.
Let the record reflect that the meetings were amended. I'm assuming that council's motion to adopt the minutes was the amended minutes.
Yes, yes.
That's good.
Which is, which is what's in front of us, so.
So let the record reflect that the council adopted the meeting minutes as amended. Thank you.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Need a motion to adopt?
So moved.
August 16th? Okay, so we have a motion.
Then a second.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Kope?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Yes.
Mayor Brewer?
Yes.
Mrs. Monroe?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Messer?
Obstand.
Mr. Shoep?
Yes.
All right. Part of the meeting I always love, and that is a certificate of appreciation for individuals and very special groups. And I believe we have a few in the first and second row. So I would like to bring up our wonderful Lebanon Garden Club. Step two, right here. And for those of you that may have gone to their beautiful butterfly release this past Saturday, oh my goodness, it was absolutely incredible. But I think as we drive around the city, all over the city, we see the beauty that can create in our city, not only in the, at the train station, but everywhere. And it's kind of a quality of life, beauty, color, and we thank you. I know you love what you do. The passion is there, but we wanted to recognize you and thank you for all that you do. We love it. So I have a certificate of appreciation. It's presented to Lebanon Garden Club in recognition of your ongoing service, and volunteerism, and your dedication to making the Lebanon community a beautiful place to live and work. Mickey, I didn't know if you wanted to say a few words or anything? Yeah, that'd be good.
I would be remiss if I didn't say that we're honored and humbled to be appreciated, shown appreciation for this, but we also appreciate the city for what they do. This garden is about seven years old, and when we started it, we had truckloads of plants. And the city sent a water truck out to help us get it all watered. We water with gallon jugs. We all, everyone up here brings gallon jugs to water that. And the first time when we had all of those plants, we were met with these trucks and just so much appreciation. And they also brought out four truckloads of black loam, and that's part of what makes it so beautiful. So although we're honored to be appreciated, we want to show our appreciation back to you. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank y'all so much.
Thank you. All right. Now we're going to move on to recognition of visitors. So I'll bring up my dear friend, Gail Rose.
Gail Rose, 305 Sheffield Court. I'm here tonight representing the Warren County Historical Society, so I know you are not going to be surprised to learn that we would like to strongly urge you to keep the train as a viable entity in Lebanon. We all know that experiencing something is so much more impactful than seeing something. So riding the train, feeling the rhythm, hearing the clack of the tracks, the sound of the whistle, the roar of the engine, these all bring to life for children rail transportation, which has been a very significant part of the development of our country. Many parents and grandparents bring their children to Lebanon to ride that train for that very reason. But beyond the historical importance is the economical impact for our city. It's a major tourist draw resulting in money being spent in our town. Many of our visitors see the train as a Lebanon icon, something special, something unique, something family-oriented. On Saturdays and every third Sunday when our museum is open, we see an increase in visitors who've come to town to ride the train and then visit the museum. And on an average, that will be at least a dozen people per day who pay admission and have come to Lebanon for the train. With closure of the Golden Turtle Chocolate Factory and the closure of the Antique Mall, if the train does not run, there will only be one tourist draw south of Main and Broadway. While there remain several significant operating businesses, they do not draw tourists. Visitors come to the museum on other ticketing specials that feature other Lebanon businesses. I was on the train recently during one of their mystery rides, and all of the people seated around me were from out of town. Eight of them from Cleveland, who came to Lebanon knowing nothing about our city, but they came to ride the mystery train. They spent money here, they ate at the Golden Lamb, and they were spending the night there as well as planning to come back to Lebanon. The train has collaborated with us on many ventures. Three times a year, we host the Princess Train, and they come to the Armstrong Conference Center. That place is 200 families with children through our doors, many of whom take the time to visit the museum. The LM&amp;M is providing extra runs for our Frontier Fair this September in support of the museum's effort to erase a significant deficit caused by the pandemic. We realize that there is a significant cost to maintaining the railroad, but we believe that the positive economic impact that our businesses enjoy from the train, plus the additional expenses of decommissioning tracks, makes maintaining the train a sound investment in Lebanon's future, as well as the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Aaron. Come on up.
My name is Aaron Swelling, and I live at 508 Cherry Hill Lane in Silverwood Farms. I also own commercial property here in downtown Lebanon. I own the Village Ice Cream Parlor. I'm going to take just a second and say thank you to the community for being so wonderful. These last two years have been fantastic with the support we've had from all of you. We really do appreciate that. I did too want to talk about the train and the overall impact that it has on us. I can definitely speak to the economics of it and what it means to the parlor and what it does to us downtown. We laugh, we like to say that we watch the train, we hear the train whistle. And at my house, because we can hear it very clearly, if I happen to be home and not at my other house down the street here, we hear the train whistle. We call that the money train. And we mean it. We watch people walk up, walk up the street from the train every single weekend, and we watch them march right into our place. What does that translate to? We are fortunate that we have a point-of-sale system that we can actually track and see where things are coming from. For us, it's about 7,500 people a year. So that's a lot of people. That's definitely a paycheck, that's a job, that's a lot of sales tax. I can pay a lot of property tax for it and having property here in Lebanon. So it all, it all definitely adds up. So economically, I was looking at the, the operating budget. And when we hear $2.5 million to replace and fix these bridges that are really the cause of the issue, when I look at a budget that's anywhere from $81 to $90 million a year, $2.5 million doesn't sound quite so scary, especially if we amortize it over 10 years. It's digestible. So from an economic perspective, what I ask you is to figure out creatively a way that we can work with the train, whether it's an excise tax, something that we add, you know, a couple of bucks to the ticket. There's 40,000 people a year coming through on that train. They'll pay the money. I guarantee that. $2 is, or $2.5 or even $3 is not that much. But let's find some creative ways. I know that Mr. Brunka is working hard with the president of the train to try and figure out ways to subsidize things, to grants, but all I ask is that we creatively figure out something, because it's not just me. It's the Lamb, it's Barrel House, it's Greenhouse Cafe, it's Cherry Street Cafe, it's Roll On Inn. The list goes on and on. That's what brings people down here, is that train. We see them not just for the train, but they come back and they visit us again. They visit us and they spend good money here, time and time again. And I see that, because I'm in my store. I see these people who came in for a trip, came back two weeks later because they had such a great time, but they didn't have enough time to spend in downtown Lebanon for the day. So economically, let's think about that. And then quickly, from an iconic perspective, we have one of the greatest brand assets that anybody could possibly have. I was kind of cracking up because when I looked at the operational budget, what was at the top of the webpage? The train. We use it for everything. So please consider. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Dr. Brian Osterday. Welcome.
So I'm Dr. Brian Osterday, 7436 Indian Creek Road in Anderson, not Lebanon. I am a dentist, but I'm also a prior head of Autism Speaks of Cincinnati, sit on numerous boards within Children's Hospital, and I also want to address the train. For the special needs community, that train is a very big deal. I don't know how much, or if any of you have ever been on the train when there's a special needs sponsored event there. The magic and the wonder in those eyes is incredible. Special needs community will do anything, the parents will do absolutely anything for those children. I have personally been there when we sponsor stuff. I've taken my own kids, my special needs son, and others with us. I live in Anderson, I have family and friends that live in Lebanon. I do not come typically unless there's an event like that, where I come to here to ride that train and to do that. That is what makes this city, that's what makes this place unique and different and wonderful. And losing that, not, not having that, would mean people like me, people like the special needs community, which are thousands and thousands and thousands around greater Cincinnati, would not be here. Likely go elsewhere for the ice cream shop, or for dinners and stuff like that. And if for any other reason, these kids need that. Not necessarily need it, but it's, they look forward to it. It's a wonderful, wonderful thing, and taking that away would be, would be shameful if the, if the reason is a bridge or two that we know somehow could be fixed. He's right. The community would pay for it, no doubt. Throw a couple dollars on the ta, on the, on the ticket, it would be covered. I promise you. Thank you.
Thank you, Doctor.
Thank you.
Crystal White.
Welcome back. Hey, Crystal White, 315 Summit. I'm going to tie into a lot of what they're saying about the train. I know many people from outside of this community, if you ask them, what are the draws of Lebanon? The Golden Lamb and the train is your consistent message. People that come here often will even say our unique shops and businesses that are downtown. But I want to specifically address a comment that I've heard, and it revolves around the cost to repair the bridges. The comment to summarize is it's a lot of money to spend on a single business that we do not know how long it will be here. Well, I've had the good fortune of sitting in some meetings with the train just recently. I've learned things that I hope the rest of the community comes to understand. Rather than a business, it is a nonprofit. They became one in hopes of being able to secure grants and to work with other nonprofits such as PBS. So they are not a high-income business in any way. Their ridership, they understand the ridership is best done right here in the city of Lebanon. They understand why people come here, it's to supporting things. So if you take the train, the Golden Lamb, and the small businesses, they all work together to form the components of why people visit our town. But what I really want to consider is to say it's a single business. Let me take a step back, I skipped ahead. As to how long they're going to be here, again, realizing their ridership is here, the 40-plus thousand people that come into this town, as long as they're coming, they're going to stay in this town, that's what their hopes are. So to go back to the single business view, it is well beyond, that's a short view of what the train is in this community. It is well beyond, you've already heard some of the other people, and I think we have one or two more that may speak. That $2.4 million figure you gave is from seven years ago. Is that correct, Mr. Brunka? Seven years? Around 16, I believe?
Are you talking about the economic impact study?
Yes.
Yes.
Economic. So I think it's safe to say in a normal year, we're probably well above that. So you have to look about the other businesses. We have some that are heavily dependent on that train ridership. We have some that do well. We have some that don't know if the people are here because of the train. They may not have that unless it's a discussion. They don't have time to ask, are you here to rode the train? But like with festivals, we anticipate these people will come back. Someone with small children may not want to go into a place like Kay's to shop. If it's a grandparent, they may come back the next weekend. I would have. But I, I think there's an unknown figure to add to that $2.4 million, is the fact that it's an unknown how much more comes into this community. So my challenge to you is to look at the big picture as you go through and look at the cost of repairing these bridges. If the, the train or the Golden Lamb were to be taken out of the equation, do the other ones suffer? Do they fail? That's something you need to look beyond just the city's budget, and look at the overall impact as you move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa Vittek. Come on up. Lisa, when you come up here before you talk about the train, please introduce yourself because you are one of our newest businesses in town. That's why I said to introduce yourselves and let everybody know who you are.
I'm Lisa Vittek, and I just bought here a new house June 28th. It's Memzoff Main 2, T.O.O., because I own a store in Mason. And when I was, my husband and I were talking about the shop and what it could do, we thought, okay, there's a train, there's people, this could be part of our business plan. And then when I heard that there could be problems, it kind of scared us. Saturday, I was, it was my first Saturday to work in the Lebanon store. And, oh, I live at 1112 Lake Northwood. I'm in London. But anyway, it was so exciting because these little princesses were all over the street. And people were coming in, and the, the store did a phenomenal day, and because of the train. And so I just wanted to see it go forward. I've talked to several people. Mason wants to know how to get people in their downtown like we have. And I said, hey, there's this train, they can stop at Memzoff Main, they could walk and go around, and you guys could go together and pay for these things. But anyone, that's, and then I have somebody who wants to design a t-shirt and sell those in the stores too. So there are all kinds of things that people want to do to help with this. I don't know, you know. So there's, there's my two cents. Thank you.
Okay, welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I love my store.
I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Scott Brunka to give everybody an update of the process of where we are. There's been all kinds of things that we've already made decisions. And so I'm going to make sure we give the correct information to everybody so they know what we are in the process of doing.
Great. So just to kind of give, give folks some background information, so we, the city is in the tail end of an eight-year operating agreement with LM&amp;M Railroad. So our existing agreement expires on January 1st, 2023. And over, over the life of this current operating agreement, the city's invested almost a million dollars in just rail maintenance, rail upgrades. So I mean, I think that shows certainly the, the city's level of commitment towards making sure the train continues to operate in Lebanon. We are required, like all of our bridges, we are required to do an annual bridge inspection. So the city hires an engineering firm to come in and do an annual inspection on all of our road bridges, as well as all of our rail bridges. As part of the inspection process this year, they have identified two rail bridges that the city needs to start planning for the future replacement of. So anywhere from two to 10 years down the road, his recommendation is that those bridges need to be replaced. So this information was brought to City Council back in May as part of the update. I think we wanted to make sure that there were no surprises. Obviously, we shared this information with LM&amp;M Railroad as well. Just to kind of talk through options, obviously, the city needs to identify a funding plan for this infrastructure need if we are to enter into a new rail operating agreement. And what City Council directed staff to do back in May was kind of get to work on looking at funding options. And that could be, obviously, city funds. The city, over the course of this eight-year agreement, we have been saving some money in a reserve and replacement fund to be used for this, so we knew this was, you know, to some degree coming. It also included evaluating grant options, evaluating potential contributions from the train, which I think several, several folks mentioned tonight. So we've been meeting really with Ray, LM&amp;M, since May. We've had multiple meetings with the Warren County Economic Development Team. We've talked to ORDC, and we have identified, you know, some scenarios that we're going to be bringing to a City Council work session in September. So that's kind of where we're at with, with everything, and we'll have a more detailed update at the next work session, where LM&amp;M will also be coming in to give an update as well.
Great. Thank you. All right, Tina. Come on up.
Hi, my name's Tina Helsinger. I live at 1178 Poplar Field Drive. I'm here to tell everybody about an event that's coming up. It's something that's near and dear to my heart. It's to help foster care. Restoration Ranch at the Residential Treatment Facility is having an auction on September 25th. Sunday morning, my pastor, Lord Bishop, the founder of Restoration Ranch, got up before the congregation, choked up, and said to us, you don't know what it's like to hear these boys when they come into the ranch and say, they don't even know what size shoe they wear. They've never been out to a restaurant. They've never heard the words, "I love you." They're thankful that they don't have to fight for their food anymore, or hide their food, that they're somewhere, that they feel loved and they're told they're loved. They're greeted when they come in by our receptionist, Sierra. I mean, she just welcomes them with this loving heart that she has. So I just want to come, let everybody know about the event. It's September 25th at Solid Rock Church. It's for Restoration Ranch. And I know many of us have items that we can donate to this auction. Last year, we raised about, I'm sorry, last auction, not last year, we raised about $70,000, and we want to top this, top that this time. I have some information, and we're also sharing it on Facebook, on where you can drop off your items, and where you can buy tickets to come to the auction and buy some of the cool things. It's just really near and dear to my heart, and I hope that we can get some participation and get the word out on it. Thank you. Can I give these to you guys?
Yes, please do. Can you send me some information so that I can post it?
Absolutely. Great.
And I am going to bring up Dave.
Thank you.
Dave, you're blessed. I want to make sure I'm pronouncing it right.
It's Lann.
Great. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Dave Lann, 1438 Homestretch in Keeneland Estates. Actually, here with dozens of my neighbors and family. So I'll just, true, as, as proud Lebanon residents, we of Keeneland Estates celebrate watching Lebanon grow, new business revenue that'll ultimately bring in new jobs, new neighbors, and in new opportunities. Keeneland Estates is a completely unique neighborhood within the city limits. With only about 57 homes, this is truly one of those warm family destinations where everybody knows your name. Fire pits, they're plentiful during our summer months, where the kids roast their smores, and husbands share the latest of their most recent fishing victories. Every third home has a child's power wheel sitting out back, and even one of our neighbors shares their vegetable garden with everybody who wants those fresh peppers and fresh tomatoes. This is one of those neighborhoods where the families get together nearly every single evening, and children's birthdays are celebrated by blocking off cul-de-sacs. The residents of Keeneland, you, you just won't find a more committed, devoted, or loved neighborhood by its residents. The sense of belonging, safety, and security is why every family chose to either build in that neighborhood or move into this particular development in Lebanon. Where we're asking for help is in addressing the proposed road connection between the new Parkside Development and our Calumet Farms cul-de-sac. This pass-through threatens everything that our neighborhood truly holds near and dear to our hearts. Our privacy and security are our tightest-held values and priorities. Opening our community to the through-traffic that this development will bring is going to eliminate us, the ability for us to have street parties, have neighborhood children games in the street, or even really know who should or should not be there at any given time. Currently, with over 75 children calling Keeneland home, we value that kids can just play outside without having fear, but that connection puts a lot of that value in jeopardy. As it stands right now, the traffic coming in and out of our neighborhood is really just to just our neighbors alone, or those with a specific reason to be there. That's delivery drivers, or, you know, visiting friends, things of that sort. This new community, along with the traffic from State Route 63, will completely change that dynamic within our neighborhood. This new community, along with the through-traffic, is really looking to, based on a recent traffic study, would actually look to impact our traffic by upwards of 322% because of the over 700 home sites that are looking to connect to our small, tiny community. We feel this is actually widely understated, to be honest with you, because it doesn't take into consideration the fastest and safest route for all of Lebanon's shopping, especially during times of our city's plentiful downtown festivities, where you have to go through our neighborhood to Marquee Road. And working with the developer directly, they also agree, they don't want this connection. Like Neil Hughes directly can be quoted saying, if you told me tomorrow we didn't have to have it, I'd be pretty happy. So as such, we, the, you know, all the Keeneland Estates residents, we'd ask the Lebanon City Council to assist us in maintaining this safe and secure community by approving our request that this connection not be added when it comes before planning. We have watched the city councils in the past, in which we've watched how the councils partnered with other communities similar with like Orchard, or Countryside, and McBurney, where those neighbors also saw a threat to their security. In those instances, this council was able to find mutually beneficial partnerships that worked not only in the city. In those instances, this council was able to find mutually beneficial partnerships, uh, that worked not only in the city's interest, but also with the homeowners as well. So this is what our community is, uh, relying on the council to do again. Partner with us as tax-paying Lebanon proud homeowners in keeping our neighborhood wholly separate from the proposed Doyle Hughes Parkside Development. Thank you all very much, appreciate it.
Mr. Brunka, if you wanted to, uh, just say a few words.
Yeah, just, uh, just to kind of, again, go over the process. So when Keeneland Estates was constructed, the road was stubbed to, uh, the adjacent property. Uh, that was a requirement of the original Keeneland Estates development. Anytime, you know, city staff is looking at new development proposals, we always promote street connectivity. Um, that's a recommendation in the city's comprehensive plan. It obviously helps kind of evenly distribute traffic throughout a grid network and also improves emergency response. So from staff's perspective, as these projects work their way through the process, uh, we will typically recommend street connectivity. Uh, but it is a process. So when the, you know, the, the street connectivity really, um, isn't any part of the annexation legislation as before council tonight, where that will come into play is as part of the rezoning. So that'll be the next step in the parkside development process where, uh, they will have to go through a rezoning of the property to PUD. With that PUD zoning designation, they will submit a development concept plan that shows street connections, street layouts. Um, that'll first go to Planning Commission for their consideration and then ultimately City Council. So there's certainly a built-in process, um, for public input, uh, as it makes its way through the process.
So let's talk about, because I know that this, many people that are here this evening will want to be attending the Planning Commission meeting. I serve on Planning Commission. Um, what is a timeframe for folks to be able to come and participate?
Right, so when it goes to Planning Commission, that'll be dependent on when the developer actually files the application. My understanding is right now he's tentative, like, tentatively looking at November. Uh, but again, he hasn't formally filed that application yet, so I can't say for sure.
So, um, a point of contact for, I know, sir, you are the spokesman for the group. Would you be the point of contact to get out to your neighbors for the opportunity, be able to come to a Planning Commission meeting?
Absolutely.
We don't, we're not sure when that is, potential in November. Um, so, um, you can give me information, contact information, which I'll give to the city for you to have the information you need to be a part of the process. Does that sound good?
Appreciate it.
Great, thank you. All right, all right, we're going to move on to our, um, regular items. And we're going to start with previous business number one, ordinance number 2021 dash zero seventy-seven.
Ordinance number 2021 dash zero seventy-seven authorizing the city manager to execute and deliver to the Board of County Commissioners a petition for a change of township boundaries in support of the parkside annexation.
Mr. Brunka.
This ordinance authorizes the execution and delivery of a petition for a change of township boundaries to exclude Turtle Creek Township from the parkside property. This position, petition will be submitted to the Warren County Commissioners.
All right, and we, um, will entertain a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
And again, this is part of annexation. Um, any comments? Please call the roll.
Mr. Matthews.
Yes.
Mrs. Monroe.
Yes.
Mr. Coke.
Yes.
Mayor Brewer.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Messer.
Yes.
Mr. Sho.
Yes.
Um, all right, uh, moving on to new business number, um, two, ordinance number 2021 dash zero eighty-one.
Ordinance number 2021 dash zero eighty-one amending the existing development agreement between the city and originally Holdings for the 535 North Broadway Avenue property to remove the reverter clause and declaring an emergency.
Uh, Mr. Brunka.
This ordinance approves an amendment to the development agreement to remove the reverter or first right of refusal clause to allow the developer to secure financing for the project. This is the, uh, 535 North Broadway, uh, Lebanon Brewing Project. Both the city and the developer have agreed to enter into a separate right of first refusal agreement prior to closing of the property.
All right, and I am going to entertain a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, discussion or comment?
I'm, I'm very happy that we have a separate agreement. I think that was a really good win-win. I'm happy with it, so thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
So probably the one, if it goes into receivership bankruptcy, right of refusal, we would, I mean, we, we would have to be jumping in before it would happen?
Yes, that's correct. The thing that triggers the right of first refusal would be, be property owner receiving an offer. So foreclosure, it wouldn't be an offer, it would just be. Does that make sense?
Yeah. I just want to make sure we.
Great, thank you. Please call the roll.
Mr. Sho.
Yes.
Mrs. Monroe.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Messer.
Yes.
Mr. Matthews.
Yes.
Mr. Coke.
Yes.
Mayor Brewer.
Yes. Number three, ordinance number 2021 dash zero eighty-two.
Ordinance number 2021 dash zero eighty-two, an ordinance to approve a contract with Asplin Tree Expert LLC to provide tree trimming service in the vicinity of electric lines for a period of three years at a cost of $625,000 and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Brunka.
This ordinance approves a three-year contract with Asplin Tree Expert for tree trimming and removal services in the easements and right-of-way of the city's overhead electric lines. This work is necessary to reduce the risk of power outages caused by tree limb conflicts with the power lines.
And a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Sir, a second.
Second.
Discussion or comment?
Um, just wanted to mention that based on the three years, um, if I'm remembering correctly from our work session, it does come in a little bit under what we thought we would be, um, what we budgeted for basically over the three years. So just a point of, um, information.
And on a humorous note, I have to say that the phrase "tree limb conflicts with power lines" is fantastic. That's a new one.
As far as the, uh, the electric department, 190K per year, is that, is that what they sub out? Is that what that funding, or is that in addition to what we have already contracted?
So we, we don't, we don't do any, uh, tree trimming ourselves, so that is.
It's what we sub out.
Yeah, we sub everything out. We don't do anything, um, tree, tree removal, uh, tree trimming ourselves.
Okay.
All right, please call the roll.
Mrs. Monroe.
Yes.
Mayor Brewer.
Yes.
Mr. Coke.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Messer.
Yes.
Mr. Matthews.
Yes.
Mr. Sho.
Yes.
Number four, ordinance number 2021 dash, um, zero eighty-three.
Ordinance number 2021 dash zero eighty-three is an ordinance imposing a moratorium for a period of 180 days on the granting of any new permits, allowing retail dispensaries, cultivators, and processors of medical marijuana within the city of Lebanon, Ohio and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Brunka.
This ordinance imposes a six-month moratorium on new permits for medical marijuana, retail dispensaries, cultivators, and processors to allow the city to, the opportunity to review and make recommendations for the zoning code, which conform to the city's goals. And I just wanted to make sure folks understood that this does not impact, um, the existing medical marijuana dispensary's ability to, um, you know, do business at their current location. Uh, it would just be for any new permits, um, that, um, are kind of working their way through the, the state pipeline.
Great, thank you for that. Because I know there was some conversation that we were going to be doing away with the current one that we have, which is not true. Um, we were hoping that other communities would have the other, the opportunity, as well as ourselves, to be able to provide that for their communities. I think there's six new additional ones and we have one. And so that is, uh, much of our reasoning for putting the moratorium on. So I will entertain a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Uh, sir, a second.
Second.
Uh, any more conversation?
I, I just do want to mention something that Councilmember Monroe mentioned, which is a very excellent point on this matter, is that the entire, um, as specified by the state, um, the rationale behind, um, issuing the new licenses is to make the, um, the distributors, uh, dispensaries, uh, more accessible to more people within the region. It's a three-county region. And it just wouldn't make sense at all for us to have, you know, two or three here and the rest of the region have, you know, none. Um, so, you know, I mean, if they're going to dr- drive to Lebanon anyway, um, they're going to be able to use the one that's here. And, um, just, it just makes sense. If, if, if all seven of them ended up in Lebanon, their whole rationale for what they're doing at, at the state level would be, um, ridiculous. So I, I think, although I don't want to put those words in Councilmember Monroe's mouth because she didn't say it that way, but, but it's, it's true. And, uh, but, but she did bring up an excellent point about that.
Great, thank you. Please call the roll.
Mr. Matthews.
Yes.
Mr. Sho.
Yes.
Mayor Brewer.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Messer.
Yes.
Mr. Coke.
Yes.
Mrs. Monroe.
Yes.
All right, um, Mr. Brunka.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, there is no meeting of City Council next week, so our next, uh, council meeting will be a work session on Tuesday, September 7th at 7:00 PM. Uh, as I previously discussed, we will be, um, talking about the train, uh, funding options at that meeting. Also want to remind folks that we, the city is hosting a comprehensive plan public open house this Thursday in Bicentennial Park. It begins at 6:00 PM. Um, I believe Rotary will be having concerts at 7:00 PM, so stick around for that. Uh, but this is, uh, this is an important meeting. It really is, um, us bringing the draft recommendations of our comprehensive plan to the community, uh, wanting to get kind of final feedback. Um, and the comprehensive plan is going to be making recommendations on how Lebanon grows, you know, what we fund. Um, so certainly encourage folks to, to come out, um, and, uh, be part of the process. So it'll be Thursday night at 6:00 PM.
Great, thank you.
Mayor, we do, Mayor, I'm sorry, we have a request for, speak about something that is on the agenda?
That was on the agenda?
Yes.
Uh, time has passed and we are. Looking on TV.
No, I'm sorry, it was an agenda item apparently, so just public comment.
Come on up. Come on up.
I'm sorry.
I said, come on up.
My name is Veronica Striebel. I live in, uh, Clear Creek Township. I just had a question. I was really confused on the process because you said if an item was on the agenda, we didn't need to sign up beforehand and that there would be time to speak. And you guys just voted on something that the citizens that came here for did not get a chance to speak on. So I'm just really confused on the process.
So we have an opportunity to speak now if you'd like to?
Okay, but it's not me that wants to speak. I'm just, I'm unclear on the process, so if we could just go over that one more time, that'd be great, thanks.
Was there somebody that was, wanted to speak? Would you, would you please come up? I would appreciate that, thank you. And I apologize, what was, what, what item, were you want?
The last one, the moratorium.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. So last work session, I heard about the moratorium on medical marijuana dispensaries. It took me by surprise. I did some research on the topic and found information about the new dispensary licenses on the DotGov website. Sorry, I'm not holding.
Thank you.
Um, Ohio only committed six new licenses for our district. Seven dispensaries in total. No new cultivators, no new processors. Our district covers all of Warren, Clinton, and Claremont County. There are plenty of other counties in our districts that I would imagine new dispensaries are looking at. I don't believe a moratorium on dispensaries is necessary. I also looked up meeting minutes from 2017. Uh, Mayor Brewer, you said, shame on the state for allowing communities to opt out of allowing medical marijuana in, uh, the community wanted to. You thought you should enforce the state law and you see the value of medical marijuana in various illnesses. Uh, you thought we should not interpret the law, but just enforce it. And Councilmember Monroe, you said, uh, that people have worked hard to get this passed. You don't believe the government should curtail the access of it here. I understand now, if the dispensary already been here, those, you know, it's a little bit changed. But I think it's still a lot, uh, you can apply it to this as well. Um, Vice Mayor Messer, I applaud your past efforts, looking to the community and your desire to research the subject more. Um, it does seem likely now that the simple act of an elected official asking residents about legislation through a Facebook poll is worthy of applause, but here we are. Lately, uh, we, your constituents, get one work session to hear your opinions on a matter. We then get to come up here and speak to you, um, at the following meeting, in an effort just to be heard. But it feels like a waste of time because we all know you've already made up your minds. Uh, Mayor Brewer, you were quoted in a 2017 article in the Dayton Daily News. Quote, "Shame on you for giving communities the option of opting out." A mayor, Amy Brewer, said in questioning if the council should pick and choose what businesses come to our town, end quote. Council rushed through sanctuary city ordinance because you didn't want a clinic opening in town while you worked through legislation. You wanted, you want to rush this ordinance through because you don't want another dispensary in town. What changed? Why are you okay with picking and choosing our new businesses now? In 2017, this was not an emergency, but now after we already have dispensary, it is an emergency. Um, it's an emergency to keep it out of our town. Why? Why can't we let the, uh, these big decisions sit for a few weeks while you hear the opinions from the people you elected? This is not how government should work. Please be more patient and more open to discussion in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I could, ma'am? Just, just so you're clear, okay? This is, this is a temporary moratorium?
Mm-hmm.
So if you have opinions or if you have input that you would like to provide council people, you can email them, they're, 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 uh, accessible through the website. You could always call the city manager's office and ask for contact information or provide him with your input and he would be more than happy, I'm sure, to pass that on to council people. So what happened in this case was the State Board of Pharmacy, who is the regulatory agency that's in charge of, um, medical marijuana dispensary licenses, more than doubled the number of dispensary licenses. Okay, so they, they slightly more than doubled it, but they increased the number in the, the three-county area that we cover by, there's one existing, which is in Lebanon, that they, they increased it by seven more. Since some of the other communities have opted out, though it's, uh, since some of the other communities in the three-county area, um, have banned it, we just needed a little bit of time to study the issue. But this doesn't mean that more medical marijuana dispensaries are not going to be permitted in the city. This is, this is to, and, and as far as I know, the state licensing board hasn't even awarded the licenses for those dispensaries yet. So this is a temporary moratorium to study the issue. I just wanted to make certain that you were aware of that.
No, I'm, I under, I understand what the moratorium is and I understand why and I understand what Ohio is doing with the licenses. My comment is more so the fact that we hear something through a work session and we have to be on it. If you want to find out what you guys are saying, you either have to be here or you have to keep checking the website until it's uploaded. And then you get, you know, a week or half a week to, you know, figure out what's going on and then you guys pass it. And just now, you, you know, stated, if you have something that's not on the agenda, sign up. And then you just start and you vote. What's the point of me, should I have signed up even though it's on the agenda?
Well, you, you bring up a very good point on what I think I'm going to do from now on because of that. And I apologize that I, with a lot of people here, that no matter what, if you are here to sign up, even with legislation, so we just, we'll do a paper and we'll sign up, um, because it was purely my mistake to, as I was going through the legislation. So I think it's a good policy thus to have people sign up on a paper. That means for sure that I, I make sure that I get everybody that wants to speak, speak. So I apologize for that. That was my doing and there were a lot of people and, uh, I wasn't sure that, um, somebody was there. So I do apologize for that. And, um, we'll get everybody to sign up, um, from now on. That way I don't, um, miss anybody and, um, I think that'll be, that'll be, um, a good practice.
Yeah.
And as Mr. Urick said, this is temporary. Um, and while I'm sure there are some here that will strongly disagree with me, there'll be some that agree with me. I personally feel very strongly in favor of medical marijuana and its accessibility. I think that is an important medication that is very helpful to many people. Um, and I'm very happy that we have access to it here in Lebanon. Um, and I, I know that there are several others, um, that feel strongly like I do. Um, so, um, just wanted to say I'm, I'm, I'm personally very happy that it is here. Um, and this is a temporary moratorium just to pause, really, it's just a pause. And it gives even more time, frankly, for comment. time, frankly, for comment. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks. Okay, where was that? Doc, do you have anything?
No, thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Monroe, do you have anything?
Um, no.
Okay. Councilmember Matthews.
I had a few things. First, it's great to hear all the feedback on the train, great to hear of all the experiences of people still coming from all over to come to our lovely town of Lebanon, and they know how wonderful of a place it is, and they come and travel and come here and spend their businesses here, and that's fantastic. I wanted to recognize, I think I see some scouts in the back, are you here for citizenship in the community badge? Awesome, fantastic. Great to have you here, thank you so much, best of luck with that. I saw the PAC seven-fifty's recruitment drive on Wednesday, which was great. Thank you so much to the Garden Club for their butterfly release, echoing all of that, my daughter's here, and we've been there every year except for last year when it was private, and so thank you, that's a huge part of why we love Lebanon. So thank you so much for that. There were about a dozen people at the skate park discussion, so that was about a dozen people there, so that was, that was nice. And they have great, great plans, I think the discussion as it's going, hearing from Scott will be something similar to the way that we've done it with the bike park, which has been an overwhelming success. You've got community buy-in, and it's a, it's obviously there, and it's happened, so, but it's, it's done in a way that's fiscally responsible. And then just prayers and all the outreach for our friends in Hamilton Township with Emory and all of that, so.
Vice Mayor Messer.
So I'd be remiss if I didn't thank this incredible community for the past week. My family and I had a fire at our house, and pretty devastating, total loss fire. A officer spotted it actually on the way to a burglary call, and came to the front door, thought he heard something inside, but he was, he was tracked down by one of my neighbors and said that we weren't there. The fire response was just overwhelming. We had Turtle Creek there, we had Hamilton Township there, and they, they just, they worked their tails off for hours. So the house burned for about three and a half hours, and it was, they, they cared for me in my, in my panic. They were unbelievable, thoughtful, they were, they had the Red Cross there to, to talk to me if I needed things. Staff and the fire and police have just been amazing, and I just want to thank everyone on this board for reaching out, and then also the community rallying around my family was, I mean, we're still in shock from it, so I just, I can't thank everybody enough, and I, and I don't know how I can ever thank everybody enough for, for everything you've done for me, so thank you so much.
We are just very thankful and grateful that you're all okay.
Yeah. I, I did want to mention one thing. I just thought we needed to bring attention to the fact that we received information today that Lebanon was scored to be the healthiest employer in our category in our region, correct?
Correct.
And that's as far as, you know, we have, the city being fiscally responsible has, is self-insured with our health insurance for all our people, and they take that very seriously. They take, seem to take advantage of opportunities to make themselves healthier proactively, and I think, you know, just another sign of the kind of people that we're living among here in Lebanon and, but Scott and his staff and, and all of our city employees, I want to say thank you to you all for doing that, because that's an excellent thing.
Congratulations.
I'll, I'll piggyback on that. Scott has been spearheading this health, healthy initiative in our, in our, for our staff for, what has it been, eight years?
It's been a little, yeah.
It's been a while.
Pretty robust wellness program.
This isn't something that, that just happened on its own, like, they have been very, very detailed in trying to, to get people healthier and to maintain their health, and it's showing up, it's showing up in insurance premiums, and it's showing up in these awards, so thank you.
Hey, do you want to talk a little bit about the Guardian Games?
Oh, yeah. September eighteenth, my company and then also CrossFit Superfly is hosting the Guardian Games, and what that is, is a fundraiser for the FOP, Shop with a Cop program. And what we'll be doing is just like a, it's basically like a really hyped-up pump-and-run, CrossFit style, so it'll be about two and a half hours, and all the money that, that is generated from that event is going to go directly to the Police Department and the FOP, one-thirty-three here in Lebanon. It's been in downtown the past couple of years, but we're going to be hosting it at Harmon Park, at the, at the new rig that, that, that we built down there. It'll be, it'll be a fun time. We've got, we've got about thirty people signed up, thirty team, or thirty individuals signed up so far, so it should be fun.
Good.
Yeah.
Yeah, September eighteenth.
September eighteenth.
That's awesome. That's, I think, believe that's also the same day that the cabin, the Beetle Cabin, is being like...
Ten o'clock.
So that is something that I am super, also super excited about, that cabin is fantastic.
It is amazing.
The Beetle House.
It is amazing. What was the name of the company that did that? I was asked about that.
I think there's been multiple, there's been multiple companies involved, and I don't want to miss anybody.
Yeah, there's multiple contractors.
Yeah.
It looks awesome.
Yeah, but it's just a great piece of history, and I love that it's here, that it was saved, and then it's here, and it's just, it's just, it's a good frame, a point of framing this city, again, it's just really good.
And private dollars to, to do that.
Yep, yep.
Private dollars to do that.
Hundred-and-twenty-five thousand private dollars.
Hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars.
Amazing job.
Yeah.
So I'm really excited to spend more time around it.
Great.
That's also September eighteenth, so yeah, a couple of things to do that day.
We good? So I am going to entertain a motion to close the meeting.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Please call the roll.
Mayor Brewer.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Messer.
Yes.
Mrs. Monroe.
Yep.
Mr. Shoep.
Yes.
Mr. Matthews.
Yes.
Mr. Cope.
Yes.
Thank you for joining our meeting, August twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-one. Remember, we do not have a meeting next week, but the following week. Look forward to seeing you then. Have a good evening. I know it's going to be very, very hot. Please be safe and take care of your neighbor. Thank you.